We call to order this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board. It's Monday, March 24th, 2014 at 7:00 PM in the administration building boardroom level. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee, here. Mr. Deros?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Are there any non-agenda items for public comment? Hello, please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Sarah Moroso. I live at 10317 West Glendale Avenue in Wauwatosa, Wisconsin. I am on the multicultural Fair Committee at Wauwatosa West High School, and we would like to invite you to our fair on April 2nd at Wauwatosa West High School from 6 till 8:00 PM.
And do you have food?
Yes.
Yes.
The food is, you can pay one ticket for a dollar, and that is how much one plate costs.
One plate as in?
It's a plate of food. There are many different dishes, and each plate costs a dollar. And then there's also entertainment and crafts.
So there's many $1 choices for different cultural types of food?
Yes.
Oh, that sounds so wonderful.
You bring about $20, that should get you through.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for that comment.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Oh, please again. Where is that and what time?
Wauwatosa West High School at 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM.
$1 plates of food.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We all know where my heart is. So, moving on to approval of the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So who?
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Deros. Is there any Board comment on the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing no comment, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. We'll now move to the recognitions portion of the agenda. Mr. Croner, please, will you start?
Thank you. On March 18th, 17 staff members were recognized as employees of 25 years of service to the district. This year's honorees are Bernadette Bates, OT in Student Services; Lori Becker, PE at West; Jill Bottom, ELA at Whitman; Nancy Brand, Grade 4 at Roosevelt; Patricia Collins, EA Office at Wilson/WSTEM; Anne Foglia, Administrative Assistant at Whitman; Terry Kendall, PE at East; Joyce Larson, Teacher of DHOH in Student Services; Karen Lonsky, School Psychologist in Student Services; Kathy Miller, OT in Student Services; Lori Neemoller, Kindergarten at Roosevelt; Jean Paulus, GT Education Coordinator in Student Learning; Gail Salantin, Alternative Education at the Detention Center; Kathleen Sekula, Grade 3 at Underwood; John Simon, PE Health at East; and Jerry Tubel, Math, ELA at Whitman; and Linda Vitrano, Athletic Director at East.
The Herb Cole Educational Foundation named teachers Donna Bender, Wauwatosa Longfellow Middle School, and Joel Marinen, Wauwatosa Underwood Elementary School, as recipients of the 2014 Herb Cole Educational Foundation Fellows Award. Including the 2014 recipients, the Wauwatosa School District has had 38 teachers named fellows, 19 students received excellent scholarships, and five students received initiative scholarships. The Cole Foundation Scholarship and Fellowship Program was established by US Senator Herb Cole in 1990. To date, the Foundation has awarded 8.6 million to Wisconsin educators, students, and schools.
The Wauwatosa East High School Pro Start Culinary Team placed second in the state Pro Start Invitational held on March 11th at the Wisconsin Center. The East team competed against 22 schools from around the state. Students Cyrus Hoppy, A.J. Peel, Madeline Nemo, and Alec Lindroth prepared a menu inspired by flavors of the Wisconsin State Fair, including bacon and cheddar tater tots appetizer, and pork on a stick, fresh corn polenta, and apple coleslaw. Dessert featured three flavors of cream puffs, caramel apple, raspberry lemonade, and banana split. This is fun. The teams were required to make each meal twice with two butane burners and without any electricity. The East team was awarded scholarships to a variety of culinary schools. The team's mentors are executive chef Jason Taffte, Eddie Martinez, and CC Grade, pastry chef at The Cake Lady.
Two students from Wauwatosa East High School won awards for their photography in the Scholarship Art and Writing Awards National Competition. Founded in 1923, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are awarded by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers, and it's the longest-running, most prestigious recognition program for a creative teenager in the United States. The awards recognize student achievement in the visual arts and creative writing. Juniors Annalise Billings won a Gold Key, and Lydia Schuman won a Silver Key. Billings' work will be displayed in the New York City Gallery. Gold Key awards are given to students whose work demonstrates the highest levels of originality, technique, and personal vision. Silver Key awards are given to students whose work demonstrates achievement worthy of recognition on the regional level. The award ceremony will be held in June 2014 at Carnegie Hall.
Thank you, and congratulations to everyone. Now we'll move to the action items. Technology Services, Mrs. Fee, do you have the new motion?
I do. Would you like it read before Mr. Price presents or after?
What's your recommendation?
To Mr. Price give a recommendation of why we have the new motion. We can't really discuss a motion that hasn't been made, but we need your introduction.
So, we have two levels of data communication services in the district. One is the fiber connectivity between buildings that we engaged Time Warner Cable Services for five years ago. Most of you were on the Board at that time, and we had that big discussion about whether we should actually build the fiber ourselves or lease it. And it turned out to work out with Time Warner to lease it was a better fiscal option. That contract is up for expiration, and also our Internet connectivity is up for expiration as well. So, that, both of those projects were put out to bid. RFPs were, an RFP was released about five weeks ago. We had 11 respondents. The reason that the pricing was not delivered to the agenda prior to today was because today was the cutoff time, and they did not want, there was a request from vendors not to share information until the cutoff time, et cetera, et cetera. Logistically, the delay is actually my fault, even though we've been planning this for a while, and we went through the RFP process, et cetera, et cetera. We have a deadline for E-rate services, which means we get reimbursed by the federal government for a portion of this, and that deadline is in a few days. And mistakenly, logistically, I did not accommodate coming to the Board to do that, even though that we turned around the contracts and the proposals, et cetera, and the review in order to accommodate that. So, today was the cutoff. We had bids delivered, or a bid, delivered to us by nine o'clock this morning. It was reviewed by myself, other members of the Technology Services Department, and also the purchasing supervisor from Business Services. And what we have right now is what we're about to present.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Fee, will you please offer the motion?
It is recommended that the School Board approve the contract proposal of the recommended bidder, Time Warner Cable, for Internet connectivity for a five-year contract at an annual cost of $37,500, and the contract proposal of the recommended bidder, Time Warner Cable, for building-to-building fiber connectivity for a five-year contract at an annual cost of $154,800, and I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there additional presentation by administration?
No, I just put it up on the screen here in case you wanted to see it publicly. What I would add was that Time Warner Cable were the only ones that responded to the RFP in the correct manner. There were quite a few for Internet connectivity that responded but did not meet all of the RFP criteria. I did include a couple of comparative costs in there from a couple of the vendors, so that you can see that even though Time Warner was the only one that responded to the RFP correctly, they're also significantly less expensive than anybody else that provided a bid for Internet connectivity services. And in personal discussion with other school districts, this is pretty accurate. We receive Internet connectivity from Time Warner at a significantly lower rate than what many other districts are paying, because we use their fiber backbone as well, so it's all bundled into the one project. As far as the fiber, building-to-building fiber, Time Warner was the only company that responded to that RFP at all. Even though 11 companies expressed interest and received the RFP, they either declined to respond, they proactively contacted me and said, "No, we cannot meet that criteria," or they did not respond in any way whatsoever. One thing, again, a personal observation that I'll add there, the, what we pay, and this is no more than what we've been paying for the last five years as well, the renewed contract from Time Warner for the fiber connectivity is the same pricing that we've been paying over the last five years. And again, that is significantly cheaper than what a lot of other districts are paying. I do know from personal experience that other districts pay more than what we pay, and actually only receive probably 20 to 30 percent of the bandwidth. We were just very fortunate when we had that project, that Time Warner had cable running outside every one of our schools, so their build-out costs were minimal. They just had to come in from the street. They didn't have to, you know, lay fiber cabling down the entire street. So, fiscally, these are both very good options, and like I said, both other members of both Technology Services and the Business Department have reviewed and agree.
My recollection from the last time we did a contract such as this, you described to us your very sophisticated techniques for measuring compliance, the vendor compliance with their responsibilities.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm not asking that you repeat those, just to recognize that this is not a subjective measurement of service, fast, slow, by you. There's a very careful process, technical process, that you use to monitor the level of service delivered to the buildings.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes. Okay. Any questions from the Board or comments? Mr. Deros?
Hey, Jamie, we've got 11 vendors here.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming these other vendors are in the business of providing these types of services.
Yes.
But the manner in which our, apparently our RFP is put together, it's proprietary to Time Warner.
No, it's not.
Why don't, this happens over and over with this computer stuff. We get one vendor.
No, we don't.
I don't understand why there wouldn't be more vendors responding if it's not a proprietary.
I'm sorry, this does not happen over and over again where we get one vendor. Every time I put a proposal out.
Well, we get more than one vendor, but the spreads are, the spreads are huge.
Such is the nature of the industry. If a reseller, and these are two separate conversations, that the things about buying computers and parts and components, resellers have partnerships with the manufacturers of those products.
Mm-hmm.
This is actually a service, okay? We're dealing directly, we're not dealing with a reseller. We're dealing directly with a company that provides that service. These people chose not to respond for whatever reason. I do know that some of them could not meet the technical requirements. Specifically, we require a guarantee of less than or equal to 10 milliseconds round-trip time latency. That is not customized towards Time Warner. That was actually in the last contract, and it's only Time Warner that can guarantee that service. We have that requirement in there in order to service the 750 virtual desktops that we have in the district.
So what is it these other people can meet?
Well, for the ones that decline.
What's the real difference in performance?
For the ones that declined to respond, that was a sticking point for them, and they could also not guarantee the bandwidth availability for us moving forward. In this RFP, I built in factors such as, you must be able to, if our bandwidth needs increase, up to this point, you must be able to set a price for us, so that if at any point during the next five years, we decide we need to double, triple, quadruple our bandwidth, we know how much it's going to be. A number of these companies could not guarantee us that they could deliver the required amount of bandwidth.
Just seems odd to me.
I'm sorry, it's, everything's above board.
Well, I'm not saying it's not above board. I'm just saying it's odd that we couldn't come up with a RFP that more than one out of 11 could respond to.
Well, you know what, in all honesty too, I mean, that pricing we have there is extremely aggressive. I mentioned before that there are other districts that pay more than what we pay for 30 percent of what we get, and people know that, you know? Companies know that Time Warner gives us an extremely good deal. These RFPs, you know, the responses to them are in excess of 50 pages long. If they know they're not going to win the bid, they're not going to sit down and write a 50-page document just to participate. It's not worth their time.
I just have a follow-up question to that. So, perhaps in the bidding process, and I don't know if other Board members, you know, are interested, perhaps some of these qualifications can be additional, so that we can see more vendors bidding on the services.
No, they can't be additional. Some of those qualifications are required. In order for us to operate in a virtual desktop environment, we need things like less than guaranteed less than 10 millisecond round-trip time, you know? Because for those products to function, those specific technical requirements need to exist.
Right. Well, I'm not going to tell you how to do your job. I'm just saying, you know, it might help us in the future to know, you know, are there other companies out there realistically, instead of getting a list that said, "Did not respond"? I mean, yes, they probably didn't respond because of this particular qualification, but I think they may have responded or provided some information to us as a benchmark, instead of only Time Warner being able to deliver the service to us. So, I guess I can see your point. I can see Mr. Deros's point. I don't know if there's a way to fix it, or if it's necessary.
In all honesty, if we approach a company and say, "Could you please give us a bid, knowing full well that you are not going to win it," they're not getting, they're in the profit business. They're not going to provide that to us. You know, they won't sit down and write a 50, 70-page document just to entertain us. I wouldn't if I was in the for-profit business.
I understand. I understand. It's just, you know, getting a list like this is a little bit odd.
Mrs. Randall?
You mentioned that five years ago, we talked about whether or not we wanted to build our own or go with the contract. So, once we made that choice five years ago, is that, have we made that for the future, you know?
We did, yeah. When we did this five years ago, we were 90 percent on the path to purchasing fiber ourselves and implementing it. Time Warner was actually a dark horse that came out of nowhere and said, "Hey, our fiber already exists outside every school. We can do this very cheaply." $154,000 a year, if we'd have implemented it ourselves, we were looking between $3 and $5 million. Most, even when we wanted to implement it and we were working with contractors where we would pay it on an annual basis, over the course of five years, we still had to pay $3 to $5 million. This engagement that we had with Time Warner the last five years, and what, we're asking for approval for the next five years, again, is extremely inexpensive for what it is.
So you don't, you don't see us at any time building it ourselves?
Not at this cost.
Continuing this? Okay, good, thank you.
Because the added bonuses, then it's not our problem.
Right.
You know, so if the fiber gets cut in the road, Time Warner deals with it. It's not something that we have to deal with, the city and everybody else.
Okay. And I just, a brief comment on the RFPs. I know that Mr. Deros works with those in his business. I need to give this responsibility to you and the people that you work with and what you know about it. So, I mean, I couldn't begin to be part of that process, so.
Mr. Croner?
Thank you. Mrs. Randall asked most of my questions, but I just wanted to follow up a little bit. For installing our own fiber network, over 10 years, the Time Warner will be, you know, about $7, $7.5 million. Is that, so even that payback doesn't, the fiber costs aren't coming down enough to make that length of a payback?
Over 10, 10 years?
Yeah.
It's $154,000 a year. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, it's $154,000 a year now, so that'd be 1.5 million over 10 years.
Oh, okay. I'm multiplying wrong. But the cost of installing fiber hasn't, isn't coming down very fast, or so it still makes sense?
The cost of installing, no, no, because it's an extremely complex and cumbersome process. I mean, you're literally saying to the city, "We want to tear up the roads, and we want to lay our own conduit," and so on. You know, it's, it's a logistical nightmare. It's an administrative nightmare. It's a burden for us as a district. Again, if we did, for some reason, own our own fiber ring throughout the city, if there was construction somewhere and the fiber line was cut, the burden is ours to fix that. And then, you know, that can, that can take an awful long time to fix.
My view over the years, no, actually, it has been 10 years on the Board, is that I want, for me, from my opinion, I want administration to give us only choices they believe in. So, if setting the high technical bar is the only choice you believe in, then that's what, that's the only choice I want. Because if you give us other choices, we might take one of them, not understanding you don't actually believe in one of those choices. So I don't, I don't believe in choices for the sake of choices. Now, that said, we're in a situation here where there's only one viable vendor for the standard of service we want. And if I'm Time Warner, I'm saying, "How much money did I leave on the table here that I could have bid this higher?" And I'm the only vendor that's competitive for the service that Wauwatosa School District needs. How do we prevent, five years from now, when we, you know, reissue this RFP, that we really take a big price increase? You know, because you said that-
If they're the only ones, and we're not comfortable with that price increase, then we investigate again, is it something that we should build ourselves, or, you know?
Okay.
The fact of the matter is, the technical requirements that are there save us an awful lot of money on the back.
I'm not questioning the technical requirements. It looks like, it is, to me, it is a really good deal this time, and you've done a wonderful job. But what was what you said, that other districts pay a lot more for 30 percent of the service?
Mm-hmm.
That's public knowledge? No. And so, next time we try to buy this, that fact might cost us some money. It's a free market. So, that's my question, not to be answered tonight, but, you know?
It's just something I think we're going to have to deal with in five years' time.
Deal with at that time. Might be a different world.
We can't address that now. In all honesty, there could be another bigger player on the market, you know? And I think also, no, I'm not, that's speculation, I'm not going to get that.
Yeah, we can't. Five years is an eternity, right, in these things. So, all right. Well, is there any other Board comment? Thank you. Is there any community comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
We got to get a new.
Oh, what? Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Don't we need a new motion?
No, she meant, I read it.
Yeah, Mrs. Fee read it, and Mrs. Randall seconded it. A meeting last year, I might not have been so sharp with my memory, but I write this down now. So, is, so seeing no community comment, no further Board comment, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. And the next item is the Neighborhood Safe Routes Collaboration Resolution, and Dr. Earl has some explanation prior to the reading of the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This has been brought forward today because we just found out last week that we needed the School Board resolution to go along with our grant proposal. Last, last year, year and a half ago, McKinley received a Safe Routes to School grant, and Alderman Jeff Rosnowski and the parent Sarah Lorand have been heavily involved in that, in the Safe Routes program at McKinley. It is now expanded, and part of the goal of this further grant is to expand it to 13 elementary schools, and look at a coordinator that would coordinate those efforts, working from the district, so having the district step in and do a little coordination of the program. The total cost for the grant is, the total request is $63,345, and above that is, the district portion is $12,000. It will be investing into the coordination of the program. But overall, there's been significant impact that this grant has had at the elementary level. A lot of the communication that's taken place and discussion, I think, has changed. The city's engaged with a pedestrian and bike path study as well. So, there's a lot of coordinating pieces to this grant. But, again, the reason it's being brought now, not two weeks earlier, is we just found out, because in the last process, there was not a requirement for a Board resolution, so this is a new requirement that's come forward, and that's why it's being brought forward right now.
Thank you, Dr. Earl. Mrs. Rios, please, will you read the motion?
Yes. It is recommended that the School Board approve the following resolution of support for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, 2014 through 2018 Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, award cycle. Whereas, the Wauwatosa School Board supports the pre-scoping and second-round TAP application submitted to Wisconsin DOT for the 2014 through 2018 award cycle. The application is for a District Ride Safe Routes to School Program, Neighborhood Safe Routes Collaboration, and to hire a part-time coordinator for the program. Whereas, the Board recognizes that Wisconsin DOT reimburses project sponsor for the federal share of 80 percent of the approved TAP project costs, up to the limit of the federal award amount. In light of the minimum 20 percent match requirement, the Board has secured matching funds and/or commits to securing the mashing funds. And, now, therefore, be it resolved, if the Board is awarded funding by Wisconsin DOT for the 2014 through 2018 TAP award cycle, the Board is authorized to and agrees to accept the award and enter into all necessary agreements with Wisconsin DOT for the above reference project. And, be it further resolved, the Board agrees to comply with all applicable laws, requirements, and regulations as outlined in the Wisconsin DOT 2014 through 2018 TAP application materials, the state municipal agreement between Wisconsin DOT and the Board, and any other program and/or project documentation. And I so move.
Thank you, Mrs. Rios. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Is there any Board comment or questions? Or is there any additional administration presentation?
No.
No. Yes, Mr. Croner, I'm sorry.
First, I just have a question about the resolution. I understand it's required for the grant, and that's fine, and I support it, but where does a resolution sit compared to a motion, as far as what we're actually compelled to do in the future? And why, why would we not write a motion?
This is, the requirement is a resolution. This is actually almost word for word, other than what we're using the cost for what they give us for the grant. This is, the requirement is a resolution, this is actually almost word for word, other than what we're using the cost for what they give us for the grant.
Got it.
So, to answer your question, I don't know. I don't know that there's a difference, but-
My second question is, this is a worthwhile program that impacts, you know, people citywide. If the grant were not funded, is this something that the district would go ahead and implement on its own, or how, what's the thinking on that?
Yeah, yes, I think, um, the coordinator position is needed, it's growing, um, there's a lot of people that have started the work. And it, to me, it seems as though it's helped and it's improved, and we need the effort to keep going. So at some point, in some way, we would find a way to have the coordination of it done through the district.
Any other board comment, question?
What's the value of the grant?
Sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars.
That's a one-time, so in the future, we are picking up the rest of the-
It's a three-year grant, so after three years, then we make the determination whether or not we continue with it.
Mrs. Randall?
And I, did you give two other, um, dollar amounts, or?
Our match, our, our twenty percent is twelve thousand, six sixty-nine.
And that is what we use to pay the coordinator?
Yes.
Okay.
It's part-time.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional board comment or question? Any community comment or question? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfil?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Reos?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries seven, nothing. Uh, reports, human resources, the educator evaluation system. Director of Human Resources, Jack Bothwell, will report on educator effectiveness and the educator effectiveness project professional evaluation system.
Okay. Well, we are embarking in, just entering into a rollout of new evaluation system, better known as educator effectiveness. Um, and I thought I would at least give you a preview of what's happening. And it's, it's exciting, and it's exciting because, uh, we, um, are, um, I think already seeing how comprehensive this approach is and will be. Um, and, um, we're starting to understand how it's all coming together, and it's exciting to see, see in fact what it is. Just to start from the very beginning of, of why, um, can I get this, get this larger? Is that, is that just a function of the slides that, of the, here? Ah, all right, we're not slide showing one, I guess. Thank you, David. Much better. Why is Wauwautosa initiating a new evaluation system? Just to refresh your memory, board members, I'm sure you probably are recalling that Wisconsin Act one sixty-six, in fact, required that the Department of Public Instruction, DPI, create an educator effectiveness evaluation system. And that they also, at the same time, create, uh, uh, an equivalency process so other options accomplishing the same could be created. So in other words, we wouldn't just need to do the DPI version, we could do something else that accomplished the same. So with that, in fact, this district did, uh, pilot the, the DPI specific product, and then looked at, uh, another one, which was created by CESA six. Um, CESA six, I'm guessing, is becoming probably the more popular option. Many, many districts are going with the CESA six model rather than the, the, um, DPI model. DPI model has some, had some, some merits, we could see that CESA six, um, there are reasons why we might want to go with that one instead. And, um, you'll kind of s- get a feel for what this is all about as we go on. Um, of, of course, always, why do we look at, at new models? It's not just because the state law said that we had to do something. Um, always, it's about impact on student achievement. And in this case, it's, the whole focus is on a comprehensive approach to evaluation, which in fact is very tied to teacher quality improvement. So again, CESA six, um, model is the one that we opted to go with, along with at least a hundred other districts in the state of Wisconsin. The, um, the conversation about teacher quality, um, improvement really comes to, down to this chart, which reminds us that class size reduction, um, helps in terms of student achievement. But if you really wanna accomplish huge student achievement gains, it's through teacher quality improvement. In this case, you're getting a, a, a ten percent increase versus, uh, twenty-fifth versus seventy-fifth percentile level of improvement off of teacher quality improvement. The, uh, CESA six project, um, has a, a strong vision to create an effective teacher in every classroom, and an effective leader in every school, and an effective educational system in every community. And one thing that really attracted us, the CESA six model, is it's, it's virtually the same in terms of the, of the elements of the model, of the systems being used for teachers, um, educational specialists, and we'll talk about who they are, and administrators. So, um, it's, it's really kinda great for everybody to be, um, working with a system and a model that's very much the same. I think that's very reassuring, and helps everybody also understand what each other is experiencing. There's a credibility to the process when the superintendent is going to have a process which is very similar to what our classroom teachers are experiencing. The Wisconsin Act one sixty-six requires that, whether it be the, their system that was being used, or an alternate system, that, that be a balanced approach with a fifty percent being a focus on educated practice and fifty percent on student outcomes. And with that, um, this slide gives you a be- another sense of what that's all about. So, the, um, the, the, the teacher or the educator side of that is the, the balance which focuses on the practices, behaviors, knowledge, and skills, and strategies that they are using in the classroom. And the other fifty percent balanced side of that is, what's the outcome in terms of student achievement, growth, and attainment? And whether we're, again, whether we're talking about, uh, classroom teachers, specialists, or principals, that balance piece will be there in terms of what people are doing effectively versus what's the outcome in terms of student achievement, growth, and attainment. The CESA six model that we're, we are using, or will be using, is research-based, it's standards-driven. We liked it because it's, it's very custom- customizable. In fact, tomorrow, I'm working with an expert and starting to do some of that customization for what, what Wauwautosa needs and wants. Um, it's, um, very focused and feasible, it's supported by a high-quality web-based data management system. Uh, it's designed around multiple measures of evidence, it's consistent in format across all levels of performance evaluation, which I was just talking about, and it's designed, implemented, monitored, revised in partnership with educational leaders. And most important, it's equivalent to the Wisconsin Educator Effectiveness Framework for those requirements that I was just mentioning, Act one sixty-six. So we're really gonna focus in a little bit today on just the teachers and the educational specialists. Um, just reminding you, though, that there, there is a system for administrators, you'll be hearing more about it, very, very similar to what I'll be sharing with you regarding teachers and educational specialists. So who, what's, what's the discerning factor between those two groups? Well, teachers are, you know, who you traditionally think of in a classroom, face-to-face with students in a teaching, learning type of relationship throughout the school day. Whereas our educational specialists, just so you know, they're not the art, music, and PE specialists. In, in this definition, those educational specialists are school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, occupational physical therapists, literate, literar- literacy specialists. So when we're talking about art, music, PE specialists, those are in fact in that teachers group. This is a, slide is hard for you to see, but I'll, I'll, um, describe it for people who might not be able to, to see exactly what it is. But it's really valuable in that you see the three systems, those for teachers, educational specialists, and administrators, are these towers that you see in the yellow, blue, and pink, and they're gonna have all the same layers to their systems. They're gonna have a piece which involves self-evaluation, a piece that involves observation, a piece that's documentation and logging, um, surveys that will be done, a goal-setting process. Um, there, there will be what's called an interim report, and eventually a summative report, or that summative evaluation piece at the end. And is a focus on performance improvement is an aspect of all three systems, whether those be for the teachers, educational specialists, or administrators. Yes, there will be some parts that are very similar to what we've been experiencing in Wauwautosa, uh, that being traditional observations, um, that those observations may take v- many different, or many different forms, but similar forms to what we're used to, that being formal announced observations, unannounced observations, what we call informal walkthrough observations. And, um, as before, that may occur in the classroom environment, or, but it also may occur in other situations outside of the classroom. More specifically, those informal walkthrough observations, um, are fifteen minutes in duration. Typically, walk-throughs would be done three to five visits in the, in the year. Again, classroom or non-classroom settings. The, the walk-throughs are less structured, they're not a formal of observation that's pre-announced where a person's coming in for thirty minutes. And, um, with these, these types of observations we're doing, there is a form that's being used to give people feedback. We will have summative evaluations for, um, all the different groups that we'll be evaluating. Those summative evaluations, like in the past, every three years, except for the case of, of new te- new teachers coming in, then we will be evaluating them every year for the first few years until they go on to a cycle. We'll be using a four-point rating scale, I think that's a little different, we'll talk a little bit about that. And there's a specific rubric for every one of the standards that are being evaluated. Um, a key concept is that the ratings that will be given based on those rubrics are based on what's called a preponderance of evidence. So as part of our training, we come to understand what in fact preponderance of evidence is. Uh, this is just an example of a summative evaluation form. You can see that there's four categories, that being distinguished, effective, developing, or unacceptable. And there's specific descriptive information which helps us understand the, discern the difference between each of those levels of performance. A, a key part of all of this is, is a, an electronic system called My Learning Plan Oasis. It's a web-based system that allows us to manage all the pieces. We've already begun to use the system, it seems to be very intuitive, um, in terms of, of the administrators are starting to become familiar with it and use it. We, um, will be talking a little bit about how we plan to ease the teachers into the use of, of this system. I, we, we are sure it's gonna be quite easy for people that are, are new, starting out with us, because it's very, very similar in terms of the system and the types of information that's collected, um, and stored in that system. Very similar to what's called a PDP, a Personal Professional Development Plan, which our new teachers are doing as a licensing requirement. Used to be the teachers would get six credits every, every five years to re-license. Nowadays, people do that through, um, a goal-setting process and collecting of artifacts and other, other information to support the accomplishment of their goals. And that's done in an electronic system, um, that, um, helps them, um, accomplish those tasks. So, this, uh, My Learning Plan Oasis is very similar in the way it works. So probably, the biggest learning curve will be for those folks who, um, haven't been doing personal, uh, professional development plans as part of their licensing. Uh, what's being stored in those systems? Classroom observations, informal walk-throughs, self-reflective, reflective assessments, student learning objectives. Those are also called SLOs, and that's a big part of this process, I'll touch upon that a little bit more. Um, student growth data, so there's, there's, are data pieces that, that will be very mindfully storing in those systems. Portfolio evaluation, individual, team action research, so there's a strong emphasis on collaboration with this process. And then, um, um, just a reminder here that it's, this whole system is compatible with iPad, iPod Touch, iPhone, and Android, Android systems. Uh, we're, um, in the process of creating our, our support and our rollout for, for this new educator effectiveness system. And in doing that, it's, it's maybe important to know kind of who the players are in all of this. Um, first of all, there are the evaluaties, evaluaties, the people that we're evaluating, the evaluators, obviously, the administrators who are doing the evaluating. You'll hear the term EPICS, those are in fact effectiveness project coaches. In our case, we'll be identifying eight to ten people who will go through more intensive 4D training so that they can coach us all through the whole process of, of, um, using this evaluation system. That's, a big part of that is helping people create meaningful student learning objectives. Um, in the case of administrators, they're gonna be writing school learning objectives, so it's still SLOs, a little different focus. It, as we begin the rollout, we've decided that we're going to be soliciting the help of volunteers the next few months, teachers that would just play with the system, along with principals, not, um, and it's creating an evaluation for them formally, but they would pro- play with the different components of it to make sure that they were familiar with what is there, and that they could begin to then provide support for teachers who will be using it and administrators next year. People, a few people on every site who would have already had some hands-on experience would also give us some feedback as we, uh, fine-tune the rollout so that it's appropriate for our purposes, and it's not cumbersome for the people that are using that. The EPICS, again, the district people, um, will be more, um, focused on overall training, and again, helping people with those student learning, um, uh, goals. But, um, the volunteers would be probably more focused on navigating the Oasis system particularly, use, use of the computer system. There's a lot of training that goes into this, um, the administrators are ha- are already, well, um, you know, through the, the largest part of that training, uh, we are ha- having a, what's called a calibration tomorrow, which is a training where we'll be practicing, um, making sure that as we are doing observations that we're looking at, um, looking at instruction the same way, and that we're agreeable in terms of what we're seeing. The, uh, the, as I mentioned, the EPICS, those district-wide trainers, they have not gone through their training yet, so that's coming up for them, that's four days of training. The administrators have already gone through one day of, of training related to that goal-setting and that's those student learning objectives that we talked about a little bit ago. So, a lot of training has been accomplished, a lot more to go. From the, as far as the teachers go, they have not heard a lot about this yet. Uh, that we have a, a rollout committee that's creating PowerPoints and little mini, mini types of exposure, sessions that they can do with their employees, or even share with employees, and they can self-destruct to some extent. Uh, and the bigger scale is gonna be training that will be, will be providing at different times for our, our employees throughout the summer and then on as we get into the fall, too. The bottom line is, there's nothing, absolutely nothing, happening in education till it's happened to a student. So the focus of all these systems is student-focused, and it is on student achievement and outcome. So with that, probably thoroughly confused you, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Are there, are there any questions from the board, Mrs. Randall?
Well, this is the first close look I've gotten at it, too. All I can think of is time. Who has the time to do the, our teachers, of our building administrators? It seems like it's very time-intensive.
I think probably it's gonna be the biggest challenge for our administrators in terms of the time. Now, teachers, it's just gonna be more a matter of being mindful of systematically, systematically keeping, um, some types of documentation. For instance, um, again, back to teachers who've been, um, doing recertification through, um, um, a goal-setting process that, that they're already doing, they are basically setting goals, their achievement-based goals, and then they are identifying specific ways they're going to learn to support accomplishing those goals, that how they themselves are going to learn, and then figuring out how they're gonna know they've accomplished those goals, which is collecting artifacts, it's things that they're actually doing along the way that just shows in fact that they're accomplishing what they said they were gonna accomplish. So there's a, some time element to that, but I think, most likely, most good teachers are already keeping that stuff. It's just a matter of knowing- It's just a matter of knowing that they're gonna be doing that on an ongoing basis as part of their evaluation process. Now, the challenge for administrators will be, this is much more rigorous in terms of talking with teachers on a regular basis, getting in those classrooms, collecting data. Not only doing an end-of-year evaluation, but doing a mid-year feedback session with those teachers on their evaluation year, every three years for those people they're working with. They'll be doing a mid-year conversation before that summative at the end, along with being part of the beginning-of-year self-reflection. So it's gonna be a lot for administrators to accomplish.
I also think it's gonna be a time where we start looking at, I mean, the model of administrators have all the information to evaluate teachers, and I think we're gonna see a different type of system that isn't gonna be just administrators feeding into the evaluations. We're gonna have to look at different ways to do it. A principal that has sixty teachers in a building, they can't do it alone. So looking at different models for leadership in our buildings is something we've been discussing, and I think you'll see something on that in your future.
Okay. Another question I have is regarding the educational specialists, guidance counselors, social workers have very confidential responsibilities and how, obviously you can't do walkthroughs on those.
We've had a lot of conversations about, well, how, what would an observation look like?
Yeah.
For those different people. And, you know, I don't think we have all the answers on that, but it's different things for different people, obviously.
And who's giving you those, that input?
Who's giving us the, oh, in terms of what those would look like?
Yeah.
As we go down the road, I'm sure we'll be having conversations with those people to say what would be a meaningful way, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Conversations with counselors saying, well, let's think together, get our heads around this. What's a meaningful way to observe, what types of data are we gonna collect that's appropriate for the work that you do? And I see that as always a very positive thing, quite honestly, because that's, again, the conversation that will help people really understand those people's work. In the past, what have we evaluated them on is a good ques, is the question to ask, and how can this be better?
Yeah, I agree. I was gonna say something more about my first question, and I, oh, with the time element, and you mentioned that they are doing some of this. Will there be formal notices to them that they can substitute this responsibility, this record-keeping for that record-keeping or whatever? Does that make sense?
No.
Because I feel like, okay, some of the teachers say to me, okay, I gotta do this every week, and I have to do this every week, and I have to do this every week, and I have to report this. So will somebody be looking at all of that and saying this is how it fits into your evaluation?
I would say yes.
I'm really worried about the time.
Yeah.
Just from what we already hear about them having time with their students.
In my mind, that's more the role maybe of the EPICs. Although, just keep in mind that we will have a steering committee. Right now, it's mostly administrators, but we'll be expanding that to teacher representation, other educator representation. And then that group will be hearing, you know, getting, collecting input from the various users, and particularly the, those EPICs, those district coaches, because they'll have the district perspective and they'll be more directly involved with the conversations with the people at all groups as they enter into.
The other thing is, we can draw from, Jack mentioned a hundred districts. There's about a hundred districts that have implemented this for over a year, so we can get information from them. There's actually over a hundred and seventy school districts using this model out of four hundred and twenty in the state. So there's plenty of people that have been using this for a year, year and a half, going on two years, so we can get information from them.
And that, yeah, that's great, I hope we do, but we have to remember also implementing the new compensation system. So it's a lot.
It is a lot.
And I would hope that everybody, Dr. Erdl and the rest of the administrators, would let the board know what kind of support they might need, that you don't have now, whether it's people or whatever, to, you know, to stay aware of that. Okay.
Mrs. Mills, please.
Thank you. I'm gonna piggyback on what Mary Jo said with the time concern. I mean, you said, yes, it's gonna be a huge difference for administrators, which I agree that it is gonna be, but I wouldn't underestimate the amount of time this takes for teachers. I went through the PDP process myself, and I recall the frustration I felt when I knew I was doing these initiatives and I knew what I was doing with my students, but then having to take the time to actually document it well so that someone reading it can actually appreciate what I was doing in the classroom is, it's a tremendous amount of work. So I do hope that everyone is thinking about that and the fact that, you know, I know at the secondary level, you know, they have less and less time to do this, so all of this has to be done on their own time. The documentation aspect of it. So I just wanna emphasize that, yes, it is a huge amount of time for administrators, but for teachers as well. So that's one thing. And then my next question is exactly, you know, with the new compensation model, how is this exactly tying in? Because I don't hear that being referred to in any place, and, I mean, they have to be, if administrators are observing for this purpose, I can't imagine there's gonna be separate observations for them, the evaluation that happens with the teacher compensation.
No, this model, this evaluation informs the rubric that we use for compensation.
Right.
So, no, there's not anything additional for...
So it's, so I guess that's where I'm trying to make sure then, how, so this is going to be the compensation model?
It's not gonna be the compensation model, but it's gonna better inform, it's gonna inform our decisions on levels and movement throughout the salary schedule. So for example, that preponderance of evidence, that collection of resources, the repeated classroom visits, that's gonna help to inform the principals to the knowledge of the classroom teachers, how well they're doing. And that's gonna inform their compensation.
Let me give you an example, for instance, and is I listen to teachers that talk to me about their conversations with their principals regarding compensation. One of the key things, they want their principals to know what they're doing in terms of professional work particularly, and they're just always wondering, does the principal really know everything that I do? So in fact, there's a professional piece of this system where they will identify the artifacts which they think are meaningful, that represent the professional work they do. So this comprehensive approach to evaluation should, in fact, give much excellent information to inform those compensation decisions.
Okay, and so following with that, here initially, it had the fifty-fifty, half is student achievement, half is...
Is more data, one half is more data-based student achievement outcome, and the other half is what the teacher does.
Okay, so with that, I was under the impression that the new teacher compensation model was not gonna be based on student achievement, because it's very difficult to isolate the single variable being the teacher and student achievement and keep all other variables out of the picture. So how does that fall in?
Well, it's based on the evaluation of fifty, you know, I know we said that fifty percent of the evaluation is based on performance. But again, when you look at, when people think performance, they think test scores. That's really not the case, it's fifteen percent, comes down to test scores, it's SLOs, or student learning objectives. So it's no different than what we're doing now. You set a SMART goal on whether or not you achieve it, whether or not you make progress on it, all of that plays into the evaluation. But to say that somebody's not gonna get, it's gonna have a negative impact on their salary because their students aren't performing, I would say it would have a negative impact on their employment if their kids aren't performing over an extended period of time versus their salary. I just don't see that playing out as having a huge negative impact on compensation. Because if we see over a period of time, let's say there's four teachers in a third-grade team, three of them are getting eighty percent of whatever the measure is, and one teacher is getting fifty percent for three years in a row. Problem isn't, the problem, I think, is obvious. They're not getting all the kids necessarily, so I think, I would assume and would hope that our principals are in the classrooms working with that teacher and helping to improve them, so. But the evaluation clearly is part of the compensation system.
Well, it seems like this is gonna take such a huge amount of time that there won't be really room for much else to go into. I mean, I'm just, logistically, it just seems like, I don't know, I don't know.
There's not additional work for the compensation model above and beyond the evaluation.
And does the committee that, the committee that worked on the compensation model, are they, are they in line, I mean, are they aware of this at this point, or have they seen?
We shared the, I think we shared the model, I can't, I mean, we didn't get in-depth into discussion of the model.
Because I think it'd be good to have their input on it as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Mills.
Thanks.
So, let's give, Charlie.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what I wanna make sure is that the professionals are involved in the process. They're putting their information into the system. Are they the first initial point of information? So do they start the process in the system of evaluation, of how they met their goal?
Well, to keep in mind, first of all, that whereas it's a every-three-year summit evaluation, that on the off-years, people will still be contributing information to their system, whether that be revision of their goals, you know, it's pieces of information, certain artifacts that maybe they might be collecting still in off-years, so that they're building what's in that system so when they have that summit of, it's not all happening just all of a sudden that third year.
Okay, so every, okay. What I want to make sure is that this is not a process that is done to someone, that this is a process that the professionals are involved in directly, and they are driving the system. They are driving the, if you're distinguished.
Sure.
You know, they are driving the goals and they are, they're very involved. This is not something that is happening to them, they are involved in the process. And I'm assuming that the system is set up for that.
I would say, and I don't know the past system as well as I probably know this system at this point, because I'm not, you know, just starting out with Wawa Tosa. I would say they're more involved than they would have been in the past, because they're, to a large extent, they're in control of those student learning objectives. It's based on their personal reflection is what drives the goal-setting process. Very much, other than sort of our, you know, central committee will ultimately decide which forms and things we're using, but that will still have strong teacher representation and input. So they, they're really, I'd say they're more involved than in the past, probably.
Well, from my perspective, the evidence is one thing. Can you, you know, can you say that, you know, can you demonstrate that you did what you said you did? But the conversation with your evaluator or your peers or, that is very valuable in the growth area. And I'm not clear if that's going to happen on a continual basis, once a year, once every three years. I would think it would happen at least once a year, and I'm unclear about how that works.
Yeah, in fact, those off-years, we're still figuring out exactly what we're gonna do in the off-years, because there's some flexibility within the system for the districts to make those decisions still, if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
How much of what we'll do, it's not gonna be too burdensome that is meaningful and useful to people in terms of their, it's all focused on their development.
Right, so people, I mean, A, they have to know who their assessors are, assessor and assessors are. Then, you know, they have initial input where, you know, they know what their goals are and what they want to accomplish during the year, and that they have that, you know, contact with their assessor and/or assessors, so they have an opportunity to, you know, to have that conversation, not just based on, you know, input into the system. So that was my question. And then tying back to, you know, for me, if I'm, you know, one of the professionals, I'm gonna, you know, if I'm placed, you know, where I am initially and I wanna grow, that's the question in my mind with the compensation model. Okay, well, I'm placed here, how am I gonna get to, you know, how am I gonna grow and get to that next place?
Well, you'd think a lot of this is gonna be, have to do with the rubrics that are provided, because the rubrics are pretty specific in terms of the instructional piece of what we're looking for. And then we go through all this, administrators through the calibration to make sure that when we're looking at instruction, we're agreeing on what high-quality instruction is tied to those rubrics. So with that, we should be able to give much better feedback to individuals in terms of if they're not, you know, where they wanna be on that rubric as far as excellence within that certain instructional area, that they then know how to grow, that's what you're, that's what you're getting at.
But I think, you know, what some people might be asking is, well, I was placed here, but I really believe that I should be at this level. When do they have the opportunity to show that?
Well, which, you're talking about compensation again, or are you talking about...
Right. Well, I mean, it's all tied, if you're distinguished, if you're, you know, I mean, it's all tied together.
Right.
So when do they have that initial conversation where, you know, where they can start to demonstrate and/or have that conversation with their assessor that they should be placed in this...
I would say always, but you wanna...
Yeah, those conversations are already started.
Okay, good, good.
There's not many people that look at it that are at a certain, not at level three that think they should be at level three, and that's okay. But it's gonna take a lot of conversations, a lot of discussion about the evaluation, a lot of discussion about professionalism, a lot of discussion about leadership and what that looks like in our school district and what it takes for an individual to get there, and that's gonna be a process. I mean, this evaluation model, I've been around them, evaluations, whether it's being done to me as a teacher or being involved as a teacher, or as a principal, or as a superintendent, this by far is the best evaluation system that I've ever seen. All of the other ones that have been, that I've seen or been involved in or have known of, known about, nothing stacks up. And it's not, I just don't think, in a lot of perspectives, that it's gonna take a lot more time. It's a change, and to get used to a different system, just like when we changed three, four years ago to the system, although we had a technical failure. But the system is being used, it's successful in a number of districts, and I think it's gonna be helpful for us.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mills?
Just a follow-up on Carmela, and my question. On page three, slide three, the system balance. You talk about fifty percent on effective practice in the classroom and fifty percent on student outcomes. Now, the effective practice in the classroom, that's where the rubrics come in that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, so those will be spelled out, they will be specific?
The rubrics?
Yes.
The rubrics are, they exist, we do not create those rubrics, those are created by the system.
Okay, those are, okay, all right. And then fifty percent will be based on student outcomes, how are you defining student outcomes?
First of all, this system, that's underneath the whole structure of what they've created. So it's not like in our, as we use it, it's like, oh, this falls on the outcome side and that's on the practice side. I'm just, this is the belief system, this part of the law and it's below, this under, the under structure for this system.
Well, yeah, and it goes to what Carmela said too. You know, what if you have an effect, a teacher that's appearing to be effective, you know, in the rubrics? Students are not achieving at the level you would anticipate. I mean, we very well may find that out.
It's a little bit hard to explain too, is that, you know, without getting into too many details, there's like, in each system, there's six areas of performance that we zero in on. Each of those areas, there's rubrics that are very detailed regarding those six areas. So really, the information that the evaluator's getting that might impact, again, the compensation, it's within each... It's, it's within each of those systems. So it's not like there's just one score and you're, you know, you're getting a, a, an A or a B. It's, there's information within that professional category. There's information in terms of the managed, management systems that classroom teachers use and use. There's the, there's that area in terms of the knowledge of, of the curriculum they teach, that, that's another area. So there's multiple areas of expertise and feedback that would potentially inform compensation.
Okay, and that makes perfect good sense with the effective practice.
Yeah.
What, the student outcomes is what I'm wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
How, what are you defining as measures of student outcome?
Well, and that is not, oh.
It's not clearly defined yet.
It's not clearly defined yet, but that's not just like, you know, the state test of that's what you mean.
Right. I mean, I, I, people wanna know.
It, 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 it very well could be map testing, it could be, you know, classroom created assessments, it's.
Could be an AP teacher saying, I want seventy-five percent of my kids to get a three or better on an AP exam. And that's developed through a SMART goal. And if there's progress toward that SMART goal, that's student achievement. That's what we do now. We currently have those. Not that every AP teacher has that same goal, but that's the type of goals that we currently set right now, that teachers set with their principals. So that aspect of it doesn't change. It's the component that the state still hasn't made a complete determination of what they're gonna include for that. I believe it's fifteen percent related to standardized test scores.
I think that's, you know, that's important to know to, and to be careful. I, I just really think it's important. When you say fifty percent on student outcomes, what is your measure of student outcome? What is your tool? People need to know that. And because if kids aren't achieving, um, we, we gotta figure it out a different way.
Right.
Um, and, you know, is it the tool that we're measuring or that we're looking at, or is it the teachers?
Yeah, and, 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 I, I totally agree with you. Um, keep in mind that this is all about developing the teacher.
Right.
So if it's not, if we're not looking at meaningful student information that really impacts teaching and learning in the classroom, then that's of no use.
Uh-huh. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Crowder, please.
I just wanna add on that part about student outcomes. For me, this, that's the most unclear part of the compensation plan and this plan and how they meet together. And I, I don't know that, it, there hasn't been a subject for me as a board member where I've heard such careful talking around the issue of how we're measuring student outcomes without just plain speaking, defining what it is and how we're gonna measure it. Um, as Dr. Erdl mentioned, I know you can't take snapshots in time and use those maybe for significant evaluations. But he gave a really good example. If you look at average growth over a number of years and you certainly can see patterns that definitely should play a role in evaluation and definitely would, should play a role in the compensation eventually. So when we talked about the compensation plan, I, maybe I misunderstood the specific words or the way they were spoken, but it was kind of, I understood that we weren't gonna use testing data in the compensation model. But this heavily relies on it and you've said if it doesn't happen to the student, it hasn't happened, right? So I, maybe not, tonight is not the time, but at some point in the future, I think we need to have a more clear, plain speaking explanation of what it is we're gonna measure and how we're gonna apply it in our district. Cause we, you know, the board believes in and the administration believes in the testing that we do and we use it to evaluate programs and we're pretty confident in what we're measuring. So it would be helpful to have that laid out in a more clear way as to how, how the testing that we're gonna do is gonna fit into the evaluation model and to the compensation model both in a fair way, so.
If we could find a reliable standardized test that clearly judged whether a teacher is good, average, or not, and we can identify it to an individual teacher, we'll have it in front of you. So, but that being said, you gotta understand that what we're currently doing, we're using, we're using data, we're using student test scores to evaluate teachers. It's being done. And for a good portion of this new evaluation system, it's gonna look very similar. We use SMART goals. Teachers said, they set SMART goals based on data, um, in relationship to the building goals, which are in relationship to the district goals. So if there's a whole process in place, that, that part of it's not gonna change. A lot of people think that when the evaluation system came out, and for some people, that's what they intended when they said fifty percent is gonna be student test scores and student performance. Everything is about student performance. If our kids don't perform, we don't have a good school district. It's all about performance, but how do you get improvement on student performance isn't measuring whether or not, um, and trying to find a way to measure whether an individual teacher is getting those test results. Overall, I mean, it, there's, there's so many philosophical debates on that whole issue. But the state has moved away from saying fifty percent, cause originally it was gonna be fifty percent WKCE. How well the kid's doing, we're gonna move people into that and the ones that don't fit, we'll figure something else out with them, like PE and health and family consumer, they don't have kids take those tests. Then they realized that there's problems with it. So then it moved to SLOs or student learning objectives, which are those goals based on student achievement data. So that's how you're getting to that, that piece. They still haven't determined, the state hasn't, what that small percentage, and I keep going back to fifteen percent, um, is gonna be based on some kind of standardized testing measure. They, part of it's a district standardized, so I mean, more than likely, it's probably map assessments. But again, it's not for every teacher. It's the ones that can be identified. And even ones in the specialist area, not in the specialist area, still we have, we've gotta find different assessments. So it's, it's, it's a work in progress by the state. And CISA six is less of a work in progress than the DPI model and that's why we went with this, this model. So I can, I'm agreeing with you, Phil.
I know, but I'm not, I mean, I'm only, if, I know that the student outcome measurement is only a portion of the evaluation. But you mentioned that even in your example of a teacher that is, it could be a teacher that's doing particularly well over three years. You could see the student average growth in their classes just exploding. And, but I don't, I didn't see that. I, I see how that should be used. If we believe in the map testing, if we believe that's truly measuring student achievement, then that should be a valid assessment of teacher productivity. Maybe not a sn- snapshot, but over time. But I didn't see where that was included in the model as even a portion.
Valid is a debatable word.
Well, if, if we don't think it's valid, if we think it's valid to measure students, why wouldn't it be valid to measure teacher performance? I guess that's the trouble I have.
Carmella, please.
Well, I don't think you can, this is just in response, I don't think you can always correlate teacher performance directly with how students do on one exam, because there's so many other variables that are coming into play to that one student that are external from what the teacher is directly doing. Um, you know, every child grows at different times, right, through development? And if you're putting a large factor of the evaluation on one test, like the maps test, what is that also going to do to the instruction that's happening in the classroom and what other things are gonna be left out? Because we wanna make sure our kids do well on this one test, on this one, um, res- you know, resource that the district uses. And so I think we have to be very careful. And I would reiterate the idea of coming back to this when we have more information and really clearly say how this is relating to our teacher compensation model. Because I think that's something everyone has to be in line with and aware of. Because I recall conversations, you know, that I had, um, I don't know, Phil, if it was with you, when we were talking about the teacher compensation model and the idea of maybe using not individuals, teachers' results in maps, but the pool of like the school and having the school achieve to a certain point. So it's more of a collaborative effort rather than each teacher on their own. Um, you know, so there's, there's things that can be done to it. And I don't know if it has to be taken directly how CISA six does it, or we could put our own tie to it. But I think it is something that we need to come back to.
Any other comment?
Just gonna, one wrap up for me, please.
Brief, please.
I will. Um, so I, I think this is important. I think this is good. The system balance, fifty percent effective practice in the classroom and fifty percent on student outcomes. But I, I, I think we need to identify what we want as student outcomes. And certainly the people delivering the education need to know very specifically what is being requested of them and what will be looked at and measured at the end of the day. And so to me, that's not something you figure out later. To me, it's something that we figure out now.
We don't have a choice. I mean, we, we don't even know if the smarter balanced exam is coming through. Though, some of those components, we don't control. That's a state level decision for some of it. We'll make every decision we can before moving forward, but I just think you need to know that some of it's still in development. The requirements keep changing from the state.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I know. Okay, thanks.
So for my wrap up, before we ask for a community comment, I will state my position, which is the legal position. The board has not spoken unless we call the roll. We have not called the roll on any action item on this subject tonight. So we have not instructed you in any way, shape, or form. It is at your discretion to incorporate our comments as you wish. I believe this is a very good conversation and there may have been some things that you choose to take under advisement. If the board feels this is something that should be brought to a vote, then that is something that, um, well, we will have a new president in a couple of meetings. It's a little, I, I don't know that. Let your, let your president know, whomever that will be, that this is or is not something that should be taken up as an action item. Obviously, we want you to come back and report to us on progress of this and, um, outcomes and progress in its relationship to the compensation plan. You, I'm sure you will learn as time goes by and you will have new information for us based on your experience. So is there any community comment? Okay, well, thank you very much. It was a, quite a healthy discussion we had tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get a little heated sometimes.
Next, we have the, um, student learning section of the agenda. Are we starting with the high school science? Ms. Patrick is coming up, so I'm believing we're starting with science.
Tonight, we have Dave Dettinger, secondary supervisor, Tom Schneider, and Judy Patrick. Tom is from West High School and Judy is from East High School. And they are going to, um, present, uh, the work that they have done through their team on science electives.
Thank you. Um, in addition to all the high school science teachers working on this proposal, there's a breakout committee of six members, Alex Sanger, Todd Neseo, Dwight Osgood from West, and Amber Stroick, Toni Brodsky, and Ms. Patrick from East. So just acknowledging that committee of people that have been working on this proposal. Um, why are we here tonight? There's a suite of events that have brought us to, to this evening. Um, you'll remember two years ago, there was a science audit in the district K-12 and the science curriculum review began in eleven twelve, last year in twelve thirteen. There were a number of presentations actually at the curriculum council to, to, that dealt with, um, curriculum at the high school level for science. There was a board presentation and an approval with some significant changes to the curriculum of our science department here in the district. And the implementation of that new curriculum began last year, that continues this year. Our audit that was performed a little over two years ago noted, uh, some concerns about our foundational courses. And a- as a result, there were significant changes made in our foundational courses. And then subsequently, other changes then have snowballed in effect. And we're gonna be looking at those subsequent changes that, um, the science teachers are recommending that we, uh, acknowledge. If we, just for the purpose of conversation, look at three levels of courses. There are the foundational courses, um, which in our district are biology, chemistry, and physics at this point. We have our AP courses as well. And then in the mid-range, we have our electives. And it's that mid-range that we're gonna be focusing on tonight. The foundational courses were changed last year. The AP courses, we're not changing those, but the mid-range courses, those electives, that's our focus for this evening. The new foundational courses that were approved last year are biology, chemistry, and physics. Each, uh, in the brackets, you see the year of implementation. Biology is in fact this year, chemistry next, and physics the following year. These courses are year-long courses. They're not semester as they were previously. There were four semester-long introductory courses. Now they're year-long. They are based on the aligned by design framework and all this is review from last year's approval by the board. They're based on the aligned by design framework, which then, um, means that they're informed by ACT, next generation of science standards and the Common Core state standards as well. And discovery education is folded in there, which is a warehouse of, um, digital materials and textbooks that the teachers have at their access and the students as well. Tom, did you wanna take a, a minute or two to just talk about biology this year, how that's going?
Sure. Um, so far this year, the biology class is going as good as it possibly can. Uh, we spent a lot of time over the summer crafting our common assessments. And we also pooled together all of our labs and our supporting activities. And, uh, right now, um, all the teachers are, are, um, teaching the bio nine class, using the supporting activities and the, the labs that we've shared. And we're all giving the common assessments, um, that we crafted over the summer. And we've just begun, um, the process of taking a look at some of those common assessment results and, um, sharing what has worked with some teachers and what hasn't worked with some teachers, trying to already strive for improvement for next year.
As an educator, it's inspirational. I've been an educator for thirty-five years. It's inspirational to me what the science teachers are doing in this district. It really is a lead-out department at this point. And especially what they're doing, um, at the high school level with biology this year. Uh, they're, they're living a life of teachers that is very hard and it's daunting, but they really are working together, collaborating. They really are creating these rich assessments and they really are looking at the results of students' work and their performance and then informing how they, uh, continue to teach. So it really is, uh, inspirational. Um, the advanced placement courses, our AP courses are not changing. We have bio, chem, physics. We have an assortment of physics that's not changing, that's staying the same. These are those mid-range courses that I was talking to you about. Just let me acknowledge on the bottom, there are two courses from Project Lead the Way in red. Uh, our students can take those in the district for science credit as electives. We're not changing anything with Project Lead the Way. We're not adding or subtracting. But I just, in full disclosure, wanna put that up there, that these are in fact electives that a student could take for science in the district. But the five above that in black are the ones that we're concerned with. These are the current mid-range courses or quote unquote electives that a student has between the foundational and, and the AP as capstone courses. The lowercase astronomy and earth science are one semester. The capitals are year-long. So these are all advanced something two. The problem is that because we've changed our foundational courses from semester to a year, the, those courses now are automatically by structure outdated or, uh, out of sync. It doesn't work anymore. So we do have, um, uh, five courses which are obsolete. And we also have an opportunity then to look at, as a team of science teachers, what courses would make the most sense for a twenty-first century education for our students in a coherent manner? Uh, what electives would be valuable for our students? The proposed courses that the science teachers are making are these. There are four of them. They're all one semester, anatomy and physiology, astronomy, environmental, and applied chemistry and physics. Um, the first three are in black and those are to be implemented, uh, through the proposal in fifteen sixteen. And the fourth one is in blue because that would be implemented one year after. Because all the work in the foundational courses is being done by science teachers, because we're now looking at these electives, there has to be some staggering. So we would take the applied chem and physics and put that off one year. That's gonna work for the implementation in terms of student access. Um, so that's why that's separate. It's also, uh, not quite as fleshed out as the other three. Um, Judy, did you wanna talk a little bit about the, the idea behind that applied chem and physics course?
Um, the three electives that are in black, the anatomy and physiology, astronomy, and environmental, were all directed by student interest. So we're still collecting some data on what we would offer as the applied chemistry or physics class. For the physics right now, um, we're leaning towards physics of the body. Because many of our students are interested in sports medicine, physical therapy, kinesiology, and that would have a direct tie to that. Right now, some of the talk about chemistry is, um, food chemistry because we have a number of students who are interested in pursuing careers in food science. So those are some areas that we are looking at. But as with anything, we do want it to be informed by what our students' interests are so that we can develop those and meet the needs of our students.
Um, and one thing that I wanna point out too is the next generation of science standards, um, came out last year with the set of standards that students should be learning, um, in, uh, K-12 in science. And they came up with four disciplines in science, life, science, space science, earth science, and physical science. And what's interesting is that each one of our electives, uh, corresponds to one of those disciplines. So in other words, the science teachers are recommending courses that are balanced and well-rounded, each of which represents. well-rounded, each of which represents an area that students should be exploring in science. All four electives will support students in being scientifically literate. This is really important. This is at the heart of, and I see this in middle school and elementary, I see it in high school. We want kids to take our science courses and then be able to watch a show on, on Nova Show and read something online, and have some sense of how to analyze the article or the show, and respond to it, and think about it as a scientifically literate citizen. That's at the heart of what we're doing, and all four electives need to fold that into what they're doing. We'll be using the critical thinking skills that are articulated in the science benchmarks as the curricular spine of these four electives. They also, as Judy was alluding to, they need to be accessible to all students. We'll have some students that are very high-flying, really love science courses. We'll have other students, like me in high school, might drag their feet a little bit at the door. These courses have to engage all of these students and interest them, and be accessible. There need to be hands-on, minds-on activities, lab work, observations, investigations, and there needs to be that analysis of data, whether that's virtual or actually from the physical world. In your packet for your PowerPoint, each of the four electives is articulated in its core concepts. We know that the benchmarks are those skills that students need to think scientifically, how they model, how they infer, but then each course also has this sort of core conceptual framework. For anatomy and physiology, it's about the structure and functioning of the human body, how those two systems interact, et cetera. So that's really a takeaway for you, that you've got those core conceptual frameworks for each of the courses. What informs these courses, as we've said already, the ACT, college and career readiness skills, the smarter balanced, real-life, world-situated assessments, the next-gen standards, the aligned by design, common core state standards. All of these frameworks inform our electives that we've begun planning and that we've already discerned who's been working on this. The Curriculum Council has met twice to talk about the science elective, and they were pretty animate and passionate about what they thought was important for a student in high school to learn. The counselors at East and West weighed in on the accessibility of these courses for all kids and the implementation over time of these courses to make sure that all demographics of students would have something that's accessible, and that they would have that at all times throughout their time in the district. Administrators, principals, and associate principals weighed in. There was really positive feedback from them to the science teachers in terms of choosing courses that kids would want to take and would be able to take. That electives committee and science teachers also met, each of those represents at least a half day, if not a full day of work, that the science teachers or the elective committees committed to and took part in. For our considerations, we did an environmental scan, so we looked at school districts throughout the country and locally. Strong, positive schools and districts, and you have a handout to that effect, but we looked to make sure that our courses were courses that were represented throughout the country, throughout other curricula as well. And when you look at that handout, you'll see, in fact, they are. The Curriculum Council weighed in and gave a lot of input. Teachers talked to their students about, as Judy alluded to, what do you want to see in a science course? What would attract you or engage you? And as Judy said, there were two strong trends. One was health, so medicine, anatomy, and physiology, the physics of biology, that one as well, and then also the environmental science, which is very popular with students, too. And not to forget that our credits for graduation have increased from two to three for science credits, which pulls in a demographic of students that might not have in the past necessarily wanted to take three credits. That's very, the committee, the elective committee, really hears that, that there will be kids that they might be challenged in taking a third credit, and so these courses really need to be accessible again and engaging for those kids. We've looked at feasibility as well, cost and needs. There's nothing out of the ordinary for these courses that are offered in a number of high schools that would be prohibitive. There's a timeline that we've looked at to make sure that, and you've got that in your packet as well, to make sure that all students will be able to take courses throughout their time. There's a point person for each of the new courses, and that's really saying a lot for these teachers, because we have the new bio. Tom represents that at West. We have the new chem next year. Judy will be shepherding that through next year at East. And then we also have a new physics following that. AP has had a lot of changes in terms of the audits and the requirements, and now we have these electives. And a person has spoken up from East and West to say, I will shepherd through the anatomy and physiology. I will shepherd through the astronomy. And I think a lot of that is because they really like it. They're passionate about it. They're going to be coming in the summer. They're going to be working in the summer doing curriculum writing. We've looked at our licensure as well, and we've made sure that what licensure is required, and is that represented on our staff? It certainly is, and it's also well-balanced. So the proposal is to approve the four new one-semester electives, anatomy and physiology, astronomy, and environmental. Those would be for the 15 and 16 school year. That applied chemistry and physics, which would probably be a rotating one-year chem, one-year physics, would be the following year, 2016, 17, and that will replace these four, the suite of these four would replace the five current mid-range courses, which are now obsolete. Those advanced two courses in those five areas. Thank you.
Well, that was hard-hitting, in a very good way. Any board comment? Mr. Croner, please.
I do not have a question. I just want to say very nice work to you and to all the people that are involved. I think that analysis of the science program, the implementation of the new courses, is it was done really well, and I hope it goes well, and I'm anxious to see how the students like it.
I think Beth and I are lucky, because we're the mouthpieces for our great team.
Mrs. Rios, please.
Thank you also, and thank you, Ms. Patrick and Mr. Schneider, for coming and sitting through the whole beginning of the meeting. Appreciate it. I am total, am totally in support of this. I think, you know, those mid-range courses really have no purpose now. I just have some questions out of curiosity more. With the three, or you said now it's switched from two credits to three-credit requirement, so if a student, let's say, can't pass a chemistry or a physics class, would they also potentially take one of these elective courses to get their credit? So that's another thing, these, these courses.
That's one of the things that we were particularly mindful of.
Right. Because that, I mean, that's a very realistic thing. And I know this isn't really a topic for this proposal, but with the implementation of the biology this year and next year, the chemistry, is there any differentiation in those cour-, not within the course, more speaking to advanced and like an honors and a not honors track within those courses? There is?
There is. For example, in biology, we've used the college readiness standards to have our cut scores, so we actually offer an advanced freshman biology and a regular freshman biology.
And so what is, so you said you're using, what are you using exactly for that?
For the, go ahead, David. For the cut score, we use the explore as our data.
Okay. And how has that-
And there's also wiggle room in terms of a student's performance, a student's request, a student's inclination, too, but the cut score is the preliminary that determines whether it's advanced. And that's inherent in the aligned by design model we got from Percy and Waukesha.
Right. No, I mean, I think you need to. I was just curious how you were doing it, and how, how has that part of the-
Fantastic. We're really able to cater the lessons to the needs of the greater number of students in the classrooms.
Right. That's great. That's great to hear. And then my last comment slash question is, I'm happy to see the environmental science. Really, that wasn't available before, and I mean, at this day and age, that has to be available. And I would also comment to think about in the future, maybe, the AP environmental science course. It's really successful in a lot of school districts, and it's one that sometimes attracts students other than the, the ones that would be going into an AP chemistry or an AP physics.
We had discussions on that, and at this point in time, we wanted to offer the environmental just to make it more accessible to all students.
Yeah.
And, and we're, have already discussed that at a future date, that we would look at the AP environmental.
Right. And I wouldn't mean instead of this one, because it would be it, but, you know, this one would be a good pull to get students into it as well. And then my last question, comment, is, so the general, like, timeline for students is that they would be taking these foundational courses, freshman through junior year, and then when, so are they, are there students that are taking AP, let's say, in electives, doubling up like junior year, and then senior year doubling up again?
Theoretically, they certainly can.
Yeah. Okay.
And we see that now with our courses now, and I would imagine that that would continue in the future.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Good job.
Any more board comment or question? Is there any community comment or question? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Next, we have the proposals for high school math courses. Presented by Director of Student Learning, Beth Ehrenberger, and Education Coordinator, Jean Paulus.
Yes, I have Jean Paulus with me this evening. Jean is the gifted and talented coordinator, and she has put in a lot of effort and research into what we're talking to you about tonight, so it only seems fair to her to have her come and share it with you. She can certainly articulate it better than I can. So Jean, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I'm here tonight because we have a problem, and it's a really good problem that we have to solve. We have approximately 12 students between East and West High School, who, beginning next fall, will be ready for college-level mathematics. They will have completed our highest-level mathematics class that we offer, which is AP Calculus BC, and they're ready for additional mathematics. And this is a larger pool than we've had in the past. We don't have any other classes beyond that that we offer. We do recommend that students take AP Statistics as well.
Judy, is physics C?
Yep. And certainly our science offerings, which we have many of that are wonderful. And students who need college-level math classes, or any college-level class, often apply through the youth options program. And when they do that, it can als-, often kind of wreak havoc on their daily schedules, because they often need to miss about three hours of their, their class periods in the course of the day. They have to, you know, leave Walertosa campus, drive to a local college, come back. Classes are offered often at different times during the week, so it can affect more than one course, so it can become very complicated for students. So the proposal that we have for you this evening is that we would offer the college-level mathematics classes here in Walertosa at East High School. We would have an instructor brought in from University of Wisconsin-Waukesha to teach the courses, and what we're thinking of doing right now is offering it as an early start class at 7:40, because we would want to give the students from West time to get back to West for their second-hour class. We may have to adjust that as we have students sign up and we see what their needs are. So semester one, we would offer calculus and analytic geometry III. It's a four-credit college-level class. The prerequisite for the class is that students score a three or better on the AP Calculus BC exam. Semester two, we would offer linear mathematics. That's another four-credit math class, and the prerequisite for that is a grade of C or better in the first semester, calculus and analytic geometry III class. I began this process last, oh, gosh, like September, October, when we found out that we had such a large pool of students who would need college-level mathematics. I contacted a number of local universities, UW Milwaukee, UW Oshkosh, which might sound like it's not exactly in our area, but they offer a CAP program, Cooperative Academic Partnership Program, that we were hoping would work, but unfortunately did not. I contacted Milwaukee Area Technical College, and they were offering a distance learning class that I investigated, but that also did not work out. Milwaukee School of Engineering, and we ended up striking up a potential partnership with University of Wisconsin-Waukesha. And investigating the various options, I talked to the other talented and gifted coordinators in southeastern Wisconsin through my CISA One group, and I found out that two districts in our area, both Elm Brook and New Berlin School Districts, have been in a partnership with them. Elm Brook has actually offered both the exact two same math courses that we're proposing on-site at Brookfield East High School for the past, I'm not sure, two or three years. They'll be offering it at both East and Central next year. And I know that New Berlin partners with them for, I believe, some science course offerings. So in talking to those people, I found representatives from those school districts, they had nothing negative to say. The only things they had to say were all extremely positive about the partnership, the professionalism, the follow-through, the quality of the instructors that they had teaching these courses within their districts. They also offered the best plan, the best tuition rate, by far, from anyone that I spoke with, and again, they offer high-quality courses. So why these particular courses? We chose these because these are common foundational kind of next-step courses for students who are pursuing higher-level coursework in mathematics, for students who are taking career pathways in engineering, or the medical fields, or, you know, pharmacology, economics, on and on it goes. So the other thing we looked at as a determination of quality was if these classes would transfer to UW Madison. And we chose Madison because they have some of the, you know, top requirements for transferring classes, and because a number of these students may attend school in Madison. But please know that students will be advised to check with the colleges that they're interested in attending to determine, you know, whether these classes would transfer and how they would transfer. So the semester-one course, calculus and analytic geometry III, transfers to UW Madison, three credits of their calculus functions of several variables course, and one credit of UW Madison math electives. The linear mathematics course transfers as four credits to their linear algebra and differential equations course. And some additional information, students would receive course grades on a college transcript. I believe the cost this year is $8 if they wish to purchase a transcript. UW Waukesha also sends student grades to Walertosa School District, so we could place them on the student's high school transcript. The course would adhere to our academic calendar and year, and we would determine the hours of the course. We need a minimum of 10 students to run this, and that is a determination made by UW Waukesha, that we would need that minimum number of students. And students also must meet the prerequisites that I talked about earlier in order to get into this course. The budget for the course is that for the, both the instructor fee and for the four college credits per course, it's $198 per credit, or $792 per course per semester. So if we would have approximately 12 students take the course, that would be about $9,504 per semester. We would also purchase the textbooks for the course. That would mainly be a one-year expense, the first year, and then, you know, we would may have to add textbook as textbook, sorry, as time goes on, but those are approximately $180 per student, and again, if we have 12 students, that's $2,160 per course. So per semester, that total is $11,664, or $23,328 for both courses for the year. And that's the basic information, so.
I'm going to lead with some questions, please. What if we had nine students interested? Would we buy the empty chair?
We would need to figure that out, and see if, we talked about that, that that might be something we would look at.
I think if we had nine, they'd probably, I think if we have nine, we have a chance. If we get below nine, I think we're probably, we have to start to look at possibilities, which we've talked about some of those.
Well, could that come back to the board if you have to make that decision? If you're going to, if you're going to turn the kids away, could that come back to the board?
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's other, there's, there's other options, too. I spoke- I spoke with Joe Foy, who's the person we're working with from UW-Waukesha Department of Continuing Education, and I've talked with some of the representatives from Elm Brook. So if this didn't work out for us, and we didn't have 10 students, there is a possibility, a very good possibility, that students could, we could pay Elm Brook, I believe, the exact same amount, similar amount, and students could take the courses, and I'm not sure if they'll have openings at both high schools, but they'll be offering at both East High School and West High School next year, and they're not positive yet, but one location might be zero hour and one location might be first hour, so there's a possibility students would have an option there as well.
And who's responsible for transportation between the high schools?
That would be up to the students.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to drive them than to buy an empty chair?
Yeah.
Just to throw out ideas for, you know?
Right, and we're going to look at that, like I said, we've already talked about that, so we'll kind of crunch those numbers and see what, what would work best at that point.
Now, why I'm so intense on this is that my own experience, although long ago, I think it would still be valid today, Walertosa East lost a couple of its best math students in the late 90s. They transferred to another high school in mid, you know, midway through East. They did not graduate at East because of math offerings at other schools. No surprise if it would still be happening if we don't provide these kinds of services. So it would, it's just a shame to lose, we don't want to lose anybody, and it's a shame to lose our stars.
Yep, I agree.
Our math stars. There's a lot of different kinds of stars, we'll leave this with our math stars. Okay, thank you. Is there any other board question or comment? Mrs. Fee, please.
Thank you. Sorry for my interruptions, too. First off, I'm glad to see this. Thank you very much for putting this together, and it sounds like you did a lot of background work. I think that this is something that there's going to be more demand for, given the number of students coming up who started algebra in seventh grade. So I'm glad that we're getting this framework in place. And just following through on our fiscal responsibilities, some of these kids might have taken youth options. If all of these students chose to take youth options, if we don't have this, how does the cost compare to doing it in-house?
If they took youth options, they'd be paying the full tuition rate, so that would be, it's like double, I believe.
I just looked today at UW-Milwaukee's website to see what they charge for four undergraduate college credits, and it's about $1,800.
And that's entirely borne by the district?
Per semester.
Yes.
And the books, and the books, sorry.
So this is a more economical option.
Yes.
And certainly, I, with the scheduling, it's a much better option for the students. So I'm fully in support. Thank you very much for putting this together.
You're welcome.
I was going to ask similar questions. So through the course options, we don't get any kind of a deal?
No, we don't. One of the things that we might have to do, which is, which we hope we don't have to do, but if we didn't have enough students to do youth options, the deadline is like March 15th, I believe. So any of these students that would have desired to do youth options would have missed that deadline. So if, for some reason, we don't end up with enough students, and though the students that we have desiring to do this and qualify, they may need to have the youth options deadline, you know, maybe waived or extended so that they could still, for semester of next year, be eligible to do youth options. So that might be something we, we hope we aren't going to come to ask for, but it could be a possibility.
But that $18,000 you mentioned, that's, that's it? I mean, there's no other?
Not to my knowledge, no.
We've never-
That's what it is, and, and understand the rate that we're getting from UW-Waukesha right now, I believe is about half of what the other school districts that I mentioned paid for this partnership in the past. Because of recent legislation called Course Proposals, that recently came out, I believe in February of this year, that impacted everything that the universities are able to offer, and how they're able to offer it, and the cost at which they offer it. And it greatly reduced the fees to school districts like ours. The program we'd be entering into with UW-Waukesha is called Dual Enrollment, and it greatly reduced the cost of this type of program. That's why $198 per undergraduate credit is a very good price, very reasonable price. So we're very fortunate in the timing.
So I don't, I don't know why anybody would take youth options courses anymore, then.
It is a concern that in the future, right now at East High School for next year, we have 67 students signed up for Calculus BC. Now, there is a prerequisite, you have to have a three or more on the Calculus BC exam, but we didn't, we had a larger pool this year than just what we ended up with, but clearly-
Yeah. And of those 67s, just 67 students, I don't want to make anybody too nervous, only 29 of those students are seniors next fall, so not all of them would, would, you know, be interested in this.
Just one last thing, offering it as an early start course, you know, we all keep reading about teenagers needing to sleep more, start later in the day. With the early start, was that the kids' request?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons we didn't do the zero-hour course, is because of that, and we're offering it early start because we wanted to provide the time for transportation for the students to get back to West High School. So we, we did take that into account, but we do want to look at how it impacts student schedules and other courses they might be interested in taking during first hour, so that's why I said that's tentative, we want to find out what would work the best for the greatest number of students that are interested in taking this.
Okay.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Thank you. This is so interesting to me. And absolutely, I would vote on an extension for youth options if we needed to. Please bring that forward. I hope we don't have to. I mean, this is necessary, and I don't understand why UW-Milwaukee is not looking to partner with us. I mean, to me, that's work for our board. That's, you know, that's some things that-
I contacted their continuing, their Department of Continuing Education, and they told me to contact their math department, and I did, and-
Yeah.
They don't have a system in place, where UW-Waukesha has a system in place, because they've been doing this for a number of years. So they are on top of things, they have this all worked out, they hire people specifically for these courses, they, you know, they're completely ready to go with this.
Yeah, and that's fantastic.
Yeah.
But I would like to see other, you know, higher education, you know?
And they may, they may.
The landscape is changing every day. In the last month, in the last month, almost daily, we've had, with the new course options versus youth options, we don't have a clear understanding of all of the implications for that, I think that was in your board packet. So the landscape is changing very rapidly with that course options and what kind of relationships school districts will have with universities. So possibly that could be something that could change, or maybe already is in the works, we, because we've certainly encountered change very rapidly in the last couple of months.
Well, it just seems like there are a lot of constraints to, you know, having all students work to their potential, and it's just, I mean, that's just a larger question, but, but it sounds like this course is structured pretty, you know, they have some constraints around how the course is structured, because I was thinking, well, what if we rotated buildings, and could we use distance learning, you know, I mean-
I investigated-
And I'm sure you did, so I just thought, oh, that would be a moot point to bring it up, but-
And those could all be things that we still have to consider, once we know more about where we end up with the number of students. I mean, those are all things that could, the distance learning with the West students, the East students, having the instructor be on one campus, you know, a couple of days together, those are all things that we'll look at and consider once we know more about who's actually going to be in the course and that we have our 10 students. We also, we have, if we had a teacher that qualified that was a math major, then we could have our, one of our teachers teach the course. So it's probably in our best interest in the future, as we hire and have opportunities, that we look for a teacher that has a math major to be able to, then we could assign it to our teacher, and they could become, they would have to get approved by the department, the math department at whatever college or university we use, and then we could offer it for credit, but we could have the teacher, it could be our teacher, and there would, that would save us a little bit of money as well. So that's in our best interest to look at for the future as well.
Do you have any other questions? Mr. Croner, please.
Just one, a general comment. I mean, this is one of those ideas that once you hear it, you kind of wonder why it didn't pop in my head so easily, but I think you did great work. The one idea that came to my mind is, is this is an excellent idea for the students at the top of the spectrum, and so I started thinking about kids at the other end of the spectrum. And I was just going to throw out as a suggestion to the administration and the board too to consider is, it seems like a very efficient way to bring expertise in-house and accomplish something very efficiently without training someone to do, bring in a new system or a new approach. So for students that are struggling, or students that might have special needs, to keep in mind, just to see if there are people out there that are trained in a particular area or particular course, to see if it's worthwhile to bring them in, to teach students that are struggling, to see if we can more efficiently find ways that might be effective for them as well. Because this seems like such a good idea, it might be easy to tap people to do that as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any community comment? Well, thank you very much. Quite a series of reports tonight. Dr. Erdl, the Superintendent Section, the Lois Weber Theater dedication.
Yes, a couple of reminders, the Lois Weber Theater at Longfellow will be dedicated on Thursday at 6:30, everybody is invited to attend. There'll be a short presentation and the dedication of the theater. And then also on April 9th, the Walertosa Youth Commission will sponsor its annual mock school board in this room here at the Fisher Building. So 7:00 PM, the students are the ones taking your roles as school board members and administrators as well, and they always do a, do a fine job each year, and it's an enjoyable event to attend and to observe, so those are two different events up and coming.
And do we know what time is the play at Longfellow?
7:00 PM, shortly after.
7:00 PM, so the dedication is-
7:30 PM.
7:30, okay. So I'm being sure, give some publicity for the play as well. 6:30 for the theater dedication for Lois Weber, and 7:30 for the play. All right. All right, we'll move on then. Is there any additional public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, at this time, may I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene in Conference Room A for a board in-service. As this in-service is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Muehlfeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, we'll reconvene, please, in five minutes.